Yeah, that would be the Department of West Virginia, DEP. The forestry oversees that, we don't.
So is it forestry or does DEP give the division?
Well, I don't know for sure. I would call the DEP and ask them who regulates forestry and then I would go to that department.
The forestry department was up there yesterday. Two vehicles, they went out there and heard there was 20 minutes and came back out. My name is Roger Strick and I live on LeRue Lane, on the backside of the firing range. As far as I know, nothing else has been done. They've even started to rip down our power lines off of our field off of Redwood Link and they've got it tied up with a rope and a metal shack and just pulling out the wish to leave and get it in and out.
Okay. Well, what Commissioner Foster is trying to say is when it comes to clear cutting and clearing land like that, we can only work in the wheelhouse and we have the authority. So you would have to contact the board that's, the board that has the authority. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
They're all aggression as long as they do not remove it. You can clear without a permit if the deed cannot grub unless you are only grubbing under an eighth. So if they're just under an eighth, they don't need a permit from anybody that the property they have.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification, Mr. Asbury. If they did have to get a permit, it would come from the DEP or the Department of Forestry?
DEP.
From the DEP, okay. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Again, a point of question that pertains to the possible public hearing. Where will it be, what newspaper will be utilized for the advertising?
The advertising for all the genists from the planning commission are always advertising Hurricane Breeze. That's the most local paper. And then, of course, they're held here for the most part.
Can you repeat that place a bit further?
The Hurricane Breeze, okay.
Would you foresee any reason that this wouldn't require some sort of public hearing?
Well, the question to that can't really be answered because we haven't received any documentation yet. It would be up to public, to staff review, looking at all the different agencies and requirements and so we can't answer that question at this point. But I appreciate all of you guys coming and I think at this time we'll just table this. It's actually not tabled because it's not on the agenda, but we'll, we'll put this off until, until we have some time to do some official, official things.
On our mailbox, do you have, do you need a copy or do you want this?
Excuse me?
This is from the gun range.
He put something, the gun range?
We would like to see that.
Sure, sure, we could take a copy of that.
They brought the copy of the 525 to make a break which is right across the street from the camp.
So they can hear you.
I'm going to allow you to speak this time, but then after that, we're going to be finished for today, okay?
Larry, could you get a copy of this sent on to all members of the planning commission?
Thank you.
I'm Bob Young. I live at 525 Fletcher Road, which is right straight across from the camp. On the weekend of July 16th, they had a, well, they're actually already utilizing this as a shooting range. On that day, we were in, we were on vacation in Wyoming and my brother-in-law, sister-in-law were staying at my house. They called us wanting to know what in the world was going on. It's my understanding that they shot 2,700 rounds in three to four hours over there that morning. They couldn't believe how much noise and what was going on. I also heard that they threw smoke grenades, flash grenades, and it was so much smoke in the hollow there where they're doing this that you couldn't hardly see the roof.
Are you, with 2,700 rounds, is that some number that you've just guessed at or did somebody go pick up shells and count those or?
Well, it was, it was told to one of the neighbors that they, that they shot that.
Okay, well, I, like I said before, I do appreciate all of you coming out to voice your concerns. We'll go ahead and do what we need to do in order to follow up through the proper channels. If you, in the meantime, you'd like to submit a letter to the planning commission ahead of time, feel free to do so. You can send those right here to the courthouse. And if, if later on we have a need for a public hearing, which very well may be, then it will be advertised and we'll take that at this time. But right now, honestly, we can hear your concerns, but there's nothing we can do because we have nothing that's official at this point.
Can I ask a question about notification?
Go ahead, sir.
I just wondered, I don't know what you're qualifying as when you're running properties, but like those of us in days met as, I don't know if that would be considered part of that or not, but we are, we can definitely hear events that are, so I'm just wondering if we can make sure they're notified through a letter or something so they won't miss that. Since someone has commented that they were.
Larry, our agenda is also posted on the website.
Yes, they are.
So they're also posted on the Putnam County website as well, planning coach website as well as in the office as well too.
Is there a regular held meeting then?
Yes, they're, they're, well, sometimes. Sometimes we'll have a special meeting, but most of the time our public hearings are here on this regular held meeting. We have a lot more to get to tonight. That's why I'm doing this because we have a lot of other public hearings as well.
A lot of sad questions, sir, and I appreciate the time and essence of this scenario here. However, a couple of questions, what constitutes the demand for a public hearing? Is this a decision made by the board or by council or how is a public hearing determined the need or is it something that we need to follow up with, with you all in letters requesting a public hearing?
In order for a public hearing to be held, number one, we would have to have an official action, an application or something of that nature. Number two, it would have to fall within the ordinance, ordinance would, would have to demand it. So really too complicated to try to explain because there's very many situations. But legal, am I answering this correctly, Larry? So according to the ordinance, if it falls within the review of the ordinance to demand a public hearing, then by all means, we absolutely have, we've got multiple here tonight.
So we need to demand one?
No, 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 no. The ordinance is demanded. If, if the situation.
So we find a way to make it happen.
Okay, so if, if we have an official movement, then we can have a public hearing. But until then, I appreciate you all coming, but we're done for now. We're finished for now, sir. Thank you very much.
Let me see if I can clarify one thing. If it meets the existing ordinances, it does not have to come in front of the planning commission. If it does not, as applied for, meet the ordinances as written, then there will be a public hearing.
So it could be state or local?
No, it would be, it, it, no.
There may not be a public hearing.
Without seeing an application, we have no way of telling you that. Once we review the application, if it fits the ordinances as they're written, there is no obligation to have a public hearing.
And those ordinances are the county ordinances as well that we're referring to?
The problem is, is as you're saying, they've held a meeting with us and they've given us just enough information and told us they're coming to you. So we have just enough information to have questions.
That's exactly why we need to wait until we get the permit request so that we know how to handle it.
If there is a way that we can ensure that there will be a public hearing, we will start our research now. And that's why I want to make sure it's at state or only county.
You can look them up.
Because I've heard it today.
We have nothing to do with the state. We only have something to do with our county ordinances.
Correct, correct. And at this point.
So it's a separate note, a different county ordinance. There is a group that's coming into, to the camp, the church camp, by the way, it's a church camp, that Mr. Owens can tell you, he was told by church camp personnel, 2,700 rounds of fire that wasn't made up, that was given to him by the church camp personnel, flashbang grenades at 120, 180 decibels. My question is, if we are all concerned and the ordinances don't apply it because there's no application, what do we do with the fact that there is enormous noise that is so trusive and flashbang grenades that are in the 120, 180 decimal range with the noise ordinance? What do you suggest we do?
The noise ordinance, you go to the sheriff's department for that.
Okay, they're coming, I'm told, in a second. Now, they don't tell us if they're going to be doing this again, if they're strategically, you know, alternating and doing something less aggressive. If we call the police in to monitor them and then, you know, they don't have such a huge display like they did when Tom could tell you or when Bob had someone call him from Wyoming because they thought something had gone wrong in the entire neighborhood, we're going to look like the pride wolf. What do we do? Any suggestions? Because they're being incredibly sneaky of us. They did this for the last eight months and it just blew up wide open.
Can I say something very quick? You're talking about the noise ordinance and I hope someone can correct that. I found the ordinance that was passed in April this year. They passed a power ordinance and a separate noise ordinance. It explicitly states in there, in paragraph C, you have paragraph A, paragraph B, and that spells out the DBs and then the fines and stuff. Paragraph C says there are, there are some that, example, hunting, trap shooting, skeet shooting and gun range. So what I read is there is no ordinance, there is no noise ordinance that's going to apply to the gun range. Am I wrong or hold on, I'm wrong?
This is lawful gun range. This is lawful gun range.
Once again, you're talking about an ordinance as well that is a county ordinance and is enforced through the sheriff's department. So once again, you're speaking to a, we're a planning commission board that deals with real estate permits and things of that nature. You're, you're talking about something that's outside of our wheelhouse. So I believe Commissioner Foster is correct.
I open here and it says here, the provisions of subsequent area of this ordinance do not apply to, number one, lawful hunting or target shooting, trap shooting or shooting range as defined in the West Virginia Code with 61, that's 23. We thought about that a little bit.
Okay, well.
My question is, it's a gray area there for, I think the West Virginia Code would actually apply.
This is all a good conversation.
My generation, I buy your success law.
All right, well, folks, I appreciate it, like I said before, but we do need to move on with our meeting. So we appreciate it. Feel free to call the office or to send letters to the office. You can send it to the county commission as well if you want to voice your opinion and if we have a public hearing, we'll let you know at that point. At that point, we'll, we'll free up more time for you to say. And with that, I greatly appreciate all of you being here today and let's move on to our next item on the agenda. Yes, we received some letters in the office because I know I've gotten some of them emailed to us this week. Absolutely, thank you very much for your time. All right, so let's move on to the next item, which is Sherry McAllister and we'll allow staff to.
Sherry McAllister has requested a classification variation for a Division of One lot at 1.7 acres from the original lot of 24 acres located on tax map 191 parcel 16.1 under article 100.013, classification variation of the Putnam County subdivision regulations to be classified as an administrative subdivision. Legal authority may be found in article 100, section 100.02, 100.03, 100.04 and article 100, section 100.01, classification variation. Facts, a copy of the application and disclosure statement is included as attachment A. The owner of the property is Sherry McAllister. A copy of the deed, deed book 519, page 958 through 961 is included as attachment B. The property is in a non-zoned area of Putnam County. A zoning map of the property is included as attachment C. The property has previously been divided four or more times. The property owner does have contiguous property. However, the plat meets all other criteria for approval as an administrative subdivision and no variance is being requested. A copy of the plat map is included as attachment D. There are no restrictive covenants for this property. There is existing water and septic. A copy of the letters from Putnam PSD and Putnam County Health Department are included as attachment E. DOH has no issue with the classification because they have stated previously that it has nothing to do with DOH. A copy of the previous memorandum is included as attachment F. E911 has approved the address for the subdivision. A copy of the letter is attached as attachment G. On September 2nd, 2021, the request was legally advertised in the Hurricane Breeze. On August 27th, 2021, all the butters within 250 feet were sent notification of this classification variation as required. On September 8th, 2021, a site sign notice was posted on site and I'm available for questions.
Does staff have any reason that we would not accept this request for a classification variation?
The only thing on the list would be the contiguous property.
Which property would that be, the contiguous piece? Just all around it?
All around it, yes, yes.
Does staff see any detriment to the community if we did accept the classification variance as requested?
Not that I can see.
Larry, a classification variance doesn't require a worksheet. The classification variance does it require a worksheet that we normally fill out? You know what I'm talking about, where it goes to the land use and all that?
Not for a classic, well, would it be under? Would it be under a major subdivision?
Does not? Okay, thank you, that's all, that's what I wanted to know.
There's a difference between variations and variants.
There you go.
Oh, okay.
There you go, that's what was getting me, okay. You know what I did not do with this is, of course, staff is still presenting their, our case, but is there anyone that has a disclosure of conflict that they would need to? Okay. Anyone? Yeah, that's where I was headed next. Okay, so does anyone have any more questions for staff? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this particular line item? Please step to the microphone, state your name and address.
My name's Sherry McAllister. I'm the petitioner, I guess, in this situation. The land, and I did not realize until I literally went to record the deed, went upstairs, met with these fine ladies, that sometimes it's not as simple as getting surveying done and all of these things. And they've explained and we've went through the process and Tina has been a godsend, but I did not know that a deed that was established, you know, maybe 100 years ago, every time it gets cut, there's different rules, you know, that apply to it. But in this particular case, I was given the property to Jacob Smith. He's at the back of the room and he's literally like a son to me. I was at the hospital the day he was born. His mother and I have been best friends since third grade. So someone said, if he were only your son, and I said, well, he is in a sense, but, you know, we all define family differently these days. But had I known, we would have certainly probably approached this differently. We just didn't know all of the rules that applied. But he has been a part of, you know, our lives the whole time he's been here on this earth. And so in my mind, it was no different than me giving it to my nephew or a niece or something like that. But I would just hope under those circumstances that maybe that would help, there was no, like, ill motive.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. McAllister? Thank you, Ms. McAllister. Does anyone else in the public have any other comments on this line item? And we'll, we'll close then the public portion of this, of this hearing then and I'll open it up for you guys on the board. Do you have any, any strong feelings or discussion on this topic?
I'll just go on record as saying, it sounds like we discussed it with planning department. Seeing that there's any issues, anything, you know, to take the property and subdivide it. I don't see any issues with it being further subdivided as opposed to make a motion to move on to classification.
So we have a motion that the classification variation be approved as presented? Do we have a second? A second motion. Make your pick. I think Mr. Hobbit was first.
Who was first?
Mr. Hobbit. So we have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, same side? We'll do it that way.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. McAllister. And we'll move on now to the, the next item, which is Jeffrey Richardson.
Yes, Jeffrey Richardson has requested a classification variation for a Division of Two lots at 1.01 and 1.62 acres from the original lot of 2.63 acres.
Let me stop you a second, Tina. I did it again. Does anyone have any conflict of interest they need to disclose on this line item? Okay, please continue.
Where was I?
I'm sorry, you just done the first sentence.
I'll just start again. I forget where I was.
I apologize, Tina. Got you, Tiffany.
Jeffrey Richardson has requested a classification variation for a Division of Two lots at 1.01 and 1.62 acres from the original lot of 2.63 acres located on tax map 216 parcel 52.13 under article 100.013, classification variation of the Putnam County subdivision regulations to be classified as an administrative subdivision. Legal authority may be found in article 100, section 100.02, section 100.03, 100.04 and And to give you, this, this section here is actually like a checklist. It's like a worksheet in a way of what should be done and what shouldn't be done or to go by, so. Yeah. Facts, a copy of the application and disclosure statement is included as attachment A. The owners of the property are Jeffrey M. and Alice G. Richardson. A copy of the deed, deed book 581, page 727 through 730 is included as attachment B. The property is in a non-zoned area of Putnam County. A zoning map of the property is included as attachment C. The property has previously been divided four or more times. The plat meets all other criteria, criteria for approval as an administrative subdivision and no variance is being requested. A copy of the plat map is included as attachment D. The property owner does not have contiguous property. There are no restrictive covenants for this property. There is existing water and sewer. A copy of the letters from the city of Nitro and West Virginia American Water is included as attachment E. DOH has no issue with the classification because they have stated previously that it has nothing to do with DOH. A copy of the previous memorandum is included as attachment F. E911 has approved addresses for the subdivision. A copy of the letter is attached as attachment G. On August 5th, 2021, the request was legally advertised in the Hurricane Breeze. On August 11th, 2021, all the butters within 250 feet were sent notification of this classification variation as required. On September 8th, 2021, a site sign notice was posted on site.
Does anybody have any questions for staff? Is there anyone from the public present to speak on behalf of this line item? The applicant or developer is not present for this. Do you have your hand up for this line item, ma'am? Please step forward and speak into the microphone. Sorry, I couldn't see you back there. Tina, when you speak, can you get in the microphone a little more? They're having trouble hearing you on the conference call.
I'm sorry.
With all due respect, we cannot hear you folks back here.
I can't hear you, ma'am.
With all due respect, we cannot hear you folks back here.
That's what we were just talking about, actually. So can you get into the microphone here and start with your name and address?
My name's Peggy Thompson, 60 Evergreen Circle, Pocah, West Virginia.
Okay, thank you, Larry.
My question is, we don't understand exactly what's going on with this subdivision and with this property. We'd like to know what's being planned for there, what they're building there and why the subdivision ruling, I don't understand. We just need a little bit of explanation.
So you're wanting to know what they're wanting to build on the property?
Yes.
I'm not sure we even know that, do we, Larry?
No, this is just a subdivision and trying to classify it as an administrative. At this point, we don't have any applications for building permits, so I have no clue what he wants to build there until he applies, yes.
Correct, at this point, we don't have any kind of building application. This is just whether or not we're going to deed the property in a certain manner. So we don't have that information either.
Say again?
This application, or this line item has nothing to do with building permits.
Okay.
There's no building permits that have been submitted. It just is dealing with the way in which the property is deeded and it has nothing to do with that, so we don't know what their long-term outlook is for the property either.
It's hard to make any decisions if we don't know a little bit more than that.
Well, the decisions that we'll make here will be based upon the ordinance and whether or not the property can be deeded legally in the manner that it can be deeded.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms., Ms. Thompson? Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Are you standing, sir? You can, please step to the microphone.
Hello, my name's Scott Barnett, I'm with Bowles Rice. I represent the Richardsons. Just to help answer that question, there, there has been a building permit issued on the one lot, I mean, it's for the whole lot right now because it hasn't been subdivided. They're building a house on the 1.01 acre tract and then they'll be hopefully with the subdivision, selling the other lot for another house. That's the plan.
So the long-term goal is two residential structures?
Yes.
Okay, well, there's the answer for that. While you're there, does, does anyone have any more questions for Mr. Barnett?
Do we know the value of the house?
I don't know the value of the house.
Yeah, we wouldn't know the value. Exactly. So, thank you, Mr. Richardson. Okay, does anyone else have anything, from the public want to speak? Okay, if not, then we'll, at this time, we'll close, close the public hearing portion. Does staff have any questions, discussion or any strong feelings? Not staff, I'm sorry, the planning commission.
I'll follow in line with what I said on the previous application. The subdivide, subdivision into two lots on this, obviously it's currently residential. It looks like the intended use, future use is going to be residential as well as building permits already been issued. I don't see any issue with it being divided into two lots versus it standing to be as one. So I would go ahead and make a motion that we, that I recommend the classification variation. So I would go ahead and make a motion that we, that I recommend the classification variation.
So we've got a motion to approve the recommendation of the classification variation as submitted. Do we have a second?
Sir.
Thank you. Definitely got a definite second at that time. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Staff, move to that one. Thank you. All right, the next line item. I'll let staff go ahead and present that one as well. Oh, before we do that, do we have any disclosures of conflict on this line item? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, staff.
St. Jimmy Calhoun, P.E. of Calhoun Engineering in Hurricane, West Virginia, is petitioning for a text amendment to revise Article 650, Section 650.2, C2 High Density Commercial District permitted principal uses, and Article 150, Section 150.2, definitions of the zoning ordinance for the zoned unincorporated areas of Putnam County, West Virginia, to add heavy construction and farm equipment sales, lease, or services as a permitted principal use. State code authority may be found in Section 8A 78. Legal authority may be found in Article 2000, 2000.03. Proposed text amendments, Article 150.02, definition of terms to include heavy equipment sales and service, the retail or wholesale or rental of heavy equipment such as backhoes, bulldozers, cranes, excavators, construction equipment, farm equipment, and similar equipment, along with incidental service or maintenance. Permitted principal uses, Article 650.02, to include heavy construction and farm equipment sales, lease, rental, or services. Facts, a copy of the application and disclosure statement are included as attachment A. On August 12th, 2021, a legal advertisement describing the text amendment proposal was published in the Hurricane Breeze as required. Article 650.01 of the zoning ordinance states it is the intent of the C2 High Density Commercial District to provide for a wide range of commercial uses whose nature of business requires convenient automobile and truck access. Such uses must be accessible to the county as well as the entire region, and must be planned in a way to promote and protect commercial and working areas. A copy of Article 650 has been included as attachment B. The recommendation of the planning commission shall be presented to the county commission at their next available meeting, at which time a second public hearing shall be held. Options, the planning commission may take a variety of actions on the proposed request. Should the planning commission desire further information regarding the facts and hearsay presented during the public hearing, the matter may be postponed for action at a later date. Should the planning commission find that the text amendment protects and promotes the public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare, and meets the intent of the reference planning documents, the request can be recommended for approval by the county commission. Should the planning commission find that the text amendment does not protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare, or does not meet the intent of the reference planning documents, the request can be recommended for disapproval by the county commission. Should the planning commission find the only parts of the text amendment protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare, and meet the intent of the reference documents while others do not, then the planning commission may recommend approval of one or more while recommending denial of one or more. There is a worksheet in the back of your packet for you to use, the last sheet in your
Does anybody have any questions for staff?
There's one question I have just getting under the permitted principal uses now. I mean, J.K. Article 1700, service, they are in 1700. I mean, so how would these differ? I mean, this is clearly the fact.
No, it's equipments, heavy equipment. So that would be different than trucks and large trucks and trailers because it would be things like bulldozers, backhoes, that kind of, yeah.
You're making a valid point. So really what you're saying is it's kind of a no brainer?
Yeah, I guess. I just wanted to make a question. 1700, would you allow?
It looks like Mr. Calhoun was the petitioner. Is he in the building today? No, he's not. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak to this line item? Okay. Then at this point, then we can go ahead and close the public comment or public hearing portion. And we'll just open it up for discussion. Or if anyone has any strong feelings. For me, I agree with you. I think it's a no brainer. We've already allowed for a dump truck. Why shouldn't we be allowing for the sale of the backhoe that goes with it, so?
There are no questions. There are 1700, was there anything in that specifically? If you could, for that, I'd like to hear.
But do you have any answer for that one, Larry? Did you understand his question?
Article 1700, that relates to J.K. Is that something we'd be also, you know, correct for this new S. I don't accept the amendment.
In other words, did staff find anything in Article 1700 that would make this provision non-compatible with 1700 or vice versa? I got you.
He's trying to make sure we have no conflicts in the ordinance, is what he's trying to get at. We appreciate that. Yeah, you need that. You can amend that.
The definitions related to Article 1700 are located in the Article 1700 supplementary provisions, about seven or eight pages from the back. It does have that font in one of the packets. Just a quick glance from me. I don't see anything that would cause any issues.
And if we did find a conflict at some point, we could come back and correct it at that point, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I see we've got a lot more to do. So unless there's something glaring, I don't see any reason to hold this up itself. Of course, it's up to the will of you guys. So let's move on to our, while Larry looks for the answer to that, well, maybe we should wait. Are we good with, satisfied with that answer, Larry?
Yes.
Okay. We do have to move on to the worksheet on this one then. And number one asks, will the proposed amendment protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, morals, and general welfare? Does anyone want to speak on behalf of that?
May I?
Certainly.
I believe that the already, that the ordinance already outlines automobile service station, farm sales, supply sales, and large truck trailer. In my opinion, based on what we don't believe is in Article 11700, this would, maybe in the convenience side, it all kind of goes together. As an equipment provider, a lot of times we have to, our trucks or trailers and our dozers all worked on, and if it's all at the same facility, it's just a matter of convenience for us.
Okay.
So I believe, I believe that based on number one, it does fit the criteria for adding convenience to the people in that type of business and the people who want to get their equipment serviced.
So would you put that in a form of a motion? That the answer should be yes?
I make a motion that we vote yes under the convenience of the criteria of item number one.
All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let it stand that the answer to number yes will be one. Number two, it says, is the amendment consistent in achieving the objectives of the adopted comprehensive plan, US 35 corridor management plan, Taze Valley land use plan? I think the answer could apply to that one, but I'll need someone to either make an argument or a motion.
I'll follow in line with what Mr. Hobbit said, that it's, with adding this to a permitted use, if I'm in line with it. I would.
We have a motion that number two would be answered yes in the affirmative? We have a second? Mr. Hobbit seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, so we've got that. The answer to number two, or one being yes, number two being yes, do we have a motion then to approve the petitioner's request for passing it on to the county commission?
I'll make a motion to approve and move it forward to the planning commission.
County commission. All right, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? All right. Good how we're all moving with one voice today. All right, the next item on the agenda then is a proposed text amendment. Do we have any disclosures of conflict? Okay, let's move on with staff.
Okay. I just mentioned that the next five text amendments that we'll be dealing with, all of which have originated from the ordinance subcommittee. The application for the text amendment was actually filed by Jason Asbury, who is the chair of the ordinance subcommittee, and that is included in your packet. The first one is text amendment 202102, text amendment to modify Articles 150.02, 250.02, 300.02, 550.02, 550.04, 600.02, 600.04, 650.02, 700.02, 750.04, 800.02, and 800.04. The authority is under West Virginia Code 8878.
Larry, can you speak a little closer to the mic? I know Jason's having a...
Seems to be.
All of the proposed text amendments are in your packet, beginning with Article 150. And essentially, this is, as a result of the election that was held in May of 2020, the voters of Putnam County voted to have medical cannabis, let me get my notes here, to allow medical cannabis dispensaries, laboratories, growers, and processors in Putnam County. As the ordinance currently stands, those are not part of the provisions of the ordinance, and this is an attempt to add those to the ordinance to bring it in compliance with what the voters had asked for. The facts, the ordinance subcommittee met and reviewed the current ordinance, zoning ordinance on May the 12th, 2021, July the 28th, 2021, and again on August the 24th, of 2021. The agendas for the meetings were posted at the Putnam County courthouse at least three days in advance of each of the meetings. The items that were discussed involved adding medical cannabis dispensaries, growers, laboratories, and processors to the zoning ordinance as a result of the voters of Putnam County approving those facilities in Putnam County during the May 2020 primary. A legal advertisement describing the text amendments proposed was published in the Hurricane Breeze as required. That took place on the second day of September, 2021. The recommendation of the planning commission shall be presented to the county commission at their next available meeting, at which time a second public hearing will be held. The options, the planning commission may take a variety of actions on the proposed request. Should the planning commission desire further information regarding the facts and hearsay presented during the public hearing, the matter may be postponed for action at a later date. Should the planning commission find that the text amendments protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare, and meets the intent of the reference planning documents, the request can be recommended for approval by the county commission. Should the planning commission find that the text amendments do not protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare, or does not meet the intent of the reference planning documents, the request can be recommended for disapproval by the county commission. Should the planning commission find that the only, that only parts of the text amendments protect and promote public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare, and meet the intent of the reference documents while others do not, then the planning commission may recommend approval of one or more while recommending denial of one or more. There is at the back of your packet your worksheet.
Does anybody have any questions for staff? Okay. Mr. Asbury, you are the chairman of the subcommittee. Would you like to speak on behalf of this? No, he's here. Can you hear me, Mr. Asbury? Are you there, Jason? He's on there. There you go. Yes, we can hear you now, sir.
I want to defer that to Mr. Mills. He's having a talk. He's there being interviewed. Here he comes.
Mr. Mills, would you have anything you'd like to say on behalf of this application?
No, I think Larry covered it very well. I think the purpose and goal was to follow state code as it relates to medical cannabis, and that's the intention of what was put in these text amendments.
Okay. At this point, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on behalf of this line item? Okay, hearing none. Then I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing portion and open it up for discussion from the floor. I agree with you, Mr. Asbury, and that it appears like what we're doing is just responding to the will of the voters at this point and attempting to develop the ordinances to line up with the voice that's already been spoken. Does anyone else have any comments, or can we move to our worksheet?
Yeah, to elaborate on what you're saying, when that was approved by the county, just to clarify, we have nothing in our current ordinances that address this. So this basically lays that out, so there's some clarification. And we tried to stay vague. We followed some other ordinances that we found that we felt were fair. So there's nothing controversial here. Based on what the voters wanted, we tried to keep it fair and simple.
Okay. Thank you for that. Well, would somebody, the first question then would be, will the proposed amendment protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, morals, and general welfare? I'll entertain any comments or motions on this regard to question number one. Okay, so we have a, is that in the form of a motion, Mr. Asbury? Okay, so we have a motion that the answer to number one shall be in the affirmative due to state code. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, so number one will stand as the answer of yes. Number two, is the amendment consistent in achieving the objectives of the adopted comprehensive plan 35, US 35 corridor management plan, and the Taze Valley land use plan? Would anyone like to speak or make a motion on behalf of that question?
I think based on what I said earlier, given it's the will of the voters to pass this in the county, we're providing clear guidance for those businesses, and that's for that reason, I think it's going to comply with the comprehensive plan.
And that's in the form of a motion then?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion that number two shall be answered yes for the aforementioned reasons. Do we have a second in that motion? We have a second right here, Mr. Mace. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Mr. Asbury said aye. Mr. Asbury said aye on the first one. Is that correct, Jason? Aye, yes, correct. Okay. There's a delay there, and I didn't want that to be confused. Seeing as how we have a unanimous yes on both question one and question two, I'll entertain a motion to recommend this text change to the county for approval.
I'll make a motion to recommend this text amendment for county commission approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Alright, so that one has passed. Let's move on with the next one then, Larry.
Alright. This is text amendment 2021-03. It's a text amendment to modify Article 1700, which is the supplementary provisions, and Article 150, the definitional section. The authority again is West Virginia Code 8A78. Included in your packet are the proposed amendments, and under Article 1700.17, this is on the third page, and outlined in red there is what is being added. This is under the home occupation provision, and it was added two sentences there. It says, "The accessory structure must be of the same quality of materials and of the same architectural type as the principal residence." E says, "The home occupation included in Article 1700.17D3 shall be considered a residential use and not a commercial use." Under, on the next page, under Article 150.02, the definition, it adds the, well, I skipped down. Let me back up. Under, on the next page, under number three, "Home occupations may include," and we've added in there, "bed and breakfast establishments, home hosting, and salons." Number four, "Bed and breakfast establishments," was stricken from that one. It was moved from number three, or number four, up to number three. Now, the next one is, "The definition of terms, home hosting, has been added. The definition that is being proposed is an apartment or room or residence rented by a host for a short timeframe. Normally does not include a complimentary breakfast. An example would be an Airbnb." The facts to be determined, the facts for this case, the ordinance review subcommittee met and reviewed the current zoning ordinance on May the 12th, 2021. The agenda for the meeting was posted at the Putnam County courthouse at least three days in advance of the meeting. One of the items that was reviewed and discussed was making changes to the home occupation in Article 1700.17D, and adding home hosting to Article 1700.17D3 in the supplemental provisions, articles of Article 1700. A legal advertisement describing the text amendment proposal was posted, was published, excuse me, in the Hurricane Breeze as required on September the 2nd, 2021. The recommendations of the planning commission shall be presented to the county commission at their next available meeting, at which time a second public hearing will be held. The options. The planning commission may take a variety of actions on the proposed request. Should the planning commission desire further information regarding the facts and hearsay presented during the public hearing, the matter may be postponed for an action at a later date. Should the planning commission find that the text amendment protects and promotes the public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare, and meets the intent of the reference planning documents, the request can be recommended for approval by the county commission. Should the planning commission find that the text amendment does not protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare, or does not meet the intent of the reference planning documents, the request can be recommended for disapproval by the county commission. Should the planning commission find that only parts of the text amendment protect and protect, excuse me, protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare, and meet the intent of the reference documents while others do not, then the planning commission may recommend approval of one or more while recommending denial of one or more. And again, there is a worksheet at the back of your packet.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for staff?
I do.
Go ahead.
So, as a builder, D, the accessory structure must be of same quality of materials and the same architectural type. I see that as a big issue, because there's always going to be that opportunity for the existing home to be completely different than what someone wants to build, and vice versa. I think that could be opening up a can of worms where somebody could play God and say, "Your house looks, or your building looks close enough to what's already there versus something else you want to do." I think that's a gray area there that should be considered. And then on item four, tourist homes, I would have thought that would have kind of gone along with the bed and breakfast concept. Would that not be more appropriately put up with the bed and breakfast and home hostings and salons?
And where was that?
Well, on the, you left, on item number four, in two, you, we have struck in bed and breakfast establishments and left tourist homes there, but we put bread and breakfast establishments and home hosting above. To me, a tourist home would be very similar to a bed and breakfast, only maybe just one room.
What is the distinction there between the two? You can clarify that for me, Larry? Or you Dave, whichever.
I don't think that there is a definition for tourist homes in the ordinance, so I'm not sure exactly what that, what that refers to.
Well, then I could see his point as to why that's confusing, so.
Yeah, I agree. I would recommend that that would be just struck from number four, because I would, my opinion, it would fall under the home hosting, as is mine today.
Well, is there, is there some definition for it in state code or something potentially? I mean, maybe it's safer just to move it up to included and then, and then address it later if there is some distinction there that we're not aware of.
Based on me Googling it, you know, because you can do everything by Google.
Oh, sure.
I would say it would be more appropriate to be more related to a bed and breakfast establishment than not.
So your recommendation would then be to move tourist home from item number four, move it to item number three?
Consistently with bed and breakfast establishment. And it's just an opinion. I think if they're just more closely related together. But I do go back to item D on number one. There's always going to be an exception to that rule while somebody's accessory building they want to make different than the existing residence. And that's just strictly from a builder's perspective.
Mr. Haba? On the thinking of the subcommittee on item number D, what was the thinking of the subcommittee that included that item? It's Mr. Haba, sorry, Mr. Mills.
To be honest with you, I'm not sure I was a part of the subcommittee when this was first discussed in terms of...
Go ahead. Jason's got something on there.
What is P?
What is the item in question? Mr. Haba's question is, where it's included in home occupation, where it says the accessory structure must be of the same quality of material, the same architectural type as the principal residence. When I read that, I'm assuming that it was the will of the subcommittee to try to inhibit folks from putting mobile trailers or things of that nature on, in the middle of a brick subdevelopment.
Take a subdivision like Woods and Irons, or Woodcrest Gold House. Our thought was, we wanted to make sure that, you know, if you're going to put up a home occupancy, or home occupation, you're not going to go to Home Depot and just buy a shit kit. It needs to match the principal structure on your lot, not to devalue adjacent property items, etc. Similar to any other architectural standards you typically see in communities.
I certainly see that in a development or subdivision, Crystal Springs, or any development, rumor station. The covenants in those usually require any accessory buildings to be consistent. I was reading this as if you had 10 acres or five acres, and you were going to do something separately.
It's valid point. If you were in a so-called subdivision without a homeowner's association that would govern, it's similar to the issue where we had with the barber shop. You know, a salon. You know, she went through the extra effort to make sure that her accessory, to match the characteristics of her house, opposed to just going out, you know, a stick building that has no character. I agree with Mr. Haba too, though. That's a good, that's a good point.
Well, I agree with Jason completely. In a development, that sentence absolutely needs to be in there along with the covenants of, most likely that development. I'm strictly looking at it for larger tracts of land in a zoned area.
All of it, materials, just the architectural?
No, it's just, it depends on what you would do. If you had, if you had a vinyl-sided house on four or five acres on the river, you might want to do something completely different to host a touring person, to live there and have a different, different effect. So there's, there could be, outside of a subdivision, a closely-held subdivision, there could be a lot of opportunities for someone to want to build something to attract those people to stay there or come and have an experience or an event.
Okay, I think we're mixing terms, though. This deals with home occupation only, not home hosting.
Okay, it does not affect bed and breakfast or anything like that?
Well, the home hosting is a different thing, but what this is dealing with is just the home occupation, which is a business basically in conjunction with your residence.
Like selling guns, or, or, you know...
Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be considered, home hosting is part of, wouldn't that be considered a home occupation, though? Because number three lists home occupation in it if it approved, and would that not still have the same application? Or is home occupation under D1 separate line item from D3?
Yeah, it just further clarifies home occupation. I think you're right.
Mr. President? Just curious, could you add something like, same as architectural type, if delineated in subdivision covenants or zoning requirements?
So your suggestion would be, if approved, one change may be that the addition to line item D would be architectural type as the principal use if required by...
Subdivision covenants or zoning requirements, because sometimes, you know, like in an unzoned area, like Dave's talking, you have acreage, you might build something totally different style.
Just to add to the discussion, is it possible that with the amendment as recommended, you can approve the vast majority of them as long as they meet those, the criteria of being similar to the materials of the principal residence? It still wouldn't preclude somebody from asking for a variance or taking it through a different process to get something approved like you're talking about, Dave? Now, I'm just, it's just to throw it in as a part of the discussion. I mean, it's a good point. So how do we handle that? Do we want to handle the bulk of them by the simple method, and then handle the other ones through a more extended method?
I'm absolutely in agreement to make changes that the bulk, go smoother for the bulk, and the ones who fall outside the standard would have a way to go and still hopefully achieve what they need to.
Do you see anything, Larry, or staff, that would preclude someone from still being able to do what Mr. Haba's asking? If we approve this as it is, it would give you all the tool to approve the vast majority. And the way I'm reading this is the planning commission and staff would determine whether it meets that criteria of similar materials or same quality materials, unless I'm reading it incorrectly.
And if it did not, then they would have the opportunity to apply for a variance or whatnot under this? Is that correct? Yes?
One option that is possibility is if it read, "The accessory structure must be of the same quality materials as the principal residence," and take out the architectural type, that makes it a little cleaner, and I think that would add more to the bulk of the ones that can get through it.
Do you care to repeat that, Dave, please?
If we just, if we just struck out "and" the same architectural type, if we struck that out, so basically we're asking for the accessory structures must be of the same quality of materials as the principal residence, and took the architectural stuff out, then I think it would, even more people would fall into the easier approach.
Or you could change it to "or" as well? Either one of those.
Mr. Asbury says he would agree with that. Okay. Well, we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves at the same time. Was there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this line item? Okay, before we get more into this, let's close. Oh, I do have someone? Can you come forward, please, and state your name and address? Thank you for pointing that out, Mr. Foster.
I think you guys know me. Lynn Tenet, Hampton Crossing. I just have a technical question, has nothing to do with what you guys are talking about, but on Article 1700, Section D, in the public ordinances that are listed on the website, lists that as a helicopter helipad, and then the next section. So is there an update on this 1700 that might not be published on the computer, on the network?
That's a good question for staff.
I can show you. I mean, I've got it up on my, on my iPad, so I'm just wondering, is, were there any other changes to 1700? I can, I can, we can talk afterwards, but...
We are in the process of trying to update all that website.
Okay.
As you know, there have been some things in the past that haven't been on there timely. I think we've done a good job here in the last month or two months of making sure that that stuff gets on there very timely.
Okay. So the Section E, there's no changes as to what you guys are talking about? That's all correct then? So just refer to Section E on the ordinances that are listed on the website.
This is just Section D.
Well, what she's saying, I think what she's saying is, on the website, on the ordinance, what we're referring to as D is referred to as E on the website. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah. So Section D is, on the website, is listed as helicopter helipad. So I just wanted to make sure that there was no other changes on section. If you're, if you're looking at section, what I'm seeing as Section E, nothing else has changed on that. Does that make sense?
It does.
That's all I, that's all I...
Okay, thank you, Ms. Tenet. We'll, we'll need to get to look at that tomorrow. Okay, well, anybody, any other members of the public here speak on behalf of this one? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing portion, and now we can continue our discussion. Before we, before we get to the worksheet, is there any other, any other changes or suggestions that folks would like to speak about before we move on?
I do just want to make another comment, and it's following up with what Brian said. Instead of potentially striking out of the same architectural type, if you put "or" in there, it's one or the other. So you have a little bit more of an option. I think that's probably a better way to go about it than completely removing it. Still, Dave, I would believe would accomplish what you're trying to get at.
Changing "and" to an "or" is what you guys are thinking.
So I need to move to amend the amendment? Larry?
That's a good question. We move to amend the amendment before we approve an amendment?
Yes.
I believe so. Yeah. So if you make such motion, is it in your...
Larry looks confused. I want to make sure we're on the same page. Is that the process?
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. So should I move to amend the amendment? To change that portion we were discussing a little bit to go to further...
And the "or" change?
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's looking for the correct procedure, Larry. If it's the will of the board to make the changes as discussed, should we do that before or after we do the worksheet? And should it be done in the form of an amendment?
Again, I'm having trouble hearing you.
With this being a text amendment and us making changes to what's proposed in front of the board, is it an amendment of the proposed amendment in the form of a motion that needs to be made? We want to change what's, yeah, we want to change what's in front of us that's proposed. So I want to amend the proposed amendment.
Correct.
And that would be now, before we went through the worksheet, correct?
And that would be what?
He would need to do that now before we went through the worksheet.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
In that case, I make a motion to move the amendment on line item D, under D, to strike and and replace it with or, substitute or.
Is it also your will then to include tourist home under category three instead of four?
In addition to that as well, yes.
Okay. So we have a motion to make these two changes as discussed. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to amend the amendment as discussed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, let's move on to our worksheet. Number one, will the proposed amendment protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, morals, and general welfare? Would anyone like to speak to that?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that it does. And quite frankly, it brings us a little bit more in line with the 21st century with, you know, the home hosting piece being added and then further defining the home occupation.
So we have a motion that the answer to number one will be yes in the affirmative. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Haba, seconds. All in favor then say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, we move on to question two. Is the amendment consistent in achieving the objectives of the adopted comprehensive plan, the U.S. 35 corridor management plan, the Taze Valley land use plan? Would anyone like to speak on that?
I'll speak again to it. I, just to reiterate what I just said, I believe it brings us more in line with today than what would have been in place when these ordinances were written, you know, years ago. I believe the answer is yes.
So we have a motion that number two would be in the affirmative. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, opposed, same sign. So the answer to number one and two both being unanimously in the affirmative. I'll entertain a motion to recommend or to accept the amendment as amended for recommendation to the county commission. Would anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion. I'll second that motion.
All right, so we now have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, let's move on to the next one, Larry.
Okay, this is text amendment 202104. It's a text amendment to modify Article 200, the conditions of the improvement location permit ordinance for Putnam County. The authority is found in 8A78. The amendments are on page three, the proposed amendments. It would in fact add to, add to articles under Article 200. 200.07 would indicate that it's a residential construction project. A residential construction project must be completed within 24 months of the date on which the building permit was issued. If the residential construction is not completed within 24 months following the date on which the permit was issued, the applicant will be required to pay a new permit fee. The applicant will be required to pay a new permit fee which is the same, which will be in the same amount as the original permit fee. The new article proposed for, will be 200.08 for non-residential construction projects. A non-residential construction project must be completed within 30 months of the date on which the building permit was issued. If the non-residential construction is not completed within 30 months following the date on which the permit was issued, the applicant will be required to pay a new permit fee. The applicant will be required to pay a new permit fee which is in the same amount as the original permit fee, provided that the new permit fee may be waived by a two-thirds vote of the planning commission board. The facts, the ordinance review subcommittee met and reviewed the current ILP ordinance on May the 12th and on August the 24th of 2021. One of the items that was reviewed and discussed was adding and making changes to the ILP by adding time limits to complete both residential construction and should be, should say non-residential construction projects. A legal advertisement describing the legal, the text amendments proposed was, it says will be, but it was actually published with, along with the rest of them, on September the 2nd of 2021. And the recommendations of the planning commission will be presented to the county commission at their next available meeting, at which time a second public hearing will be held. The planning commission may take a variety of actions on the proposed request. Should the planning commission desire further information regarding the facts and hearsay presented during the public hearing, the matter may be postponed for action at a later date. Should the planning commission find that the text amendment protects and promotes the public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare and meets the intent of the referenced planning documents, comprehensive plan and ordinance, the request can be recommended for approval by the county commission. Should the planning commission find that the text amendment does not protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare, or does not meet the intent of the referenced planning documents, comprehensive plan and ordinances, the request may be recommended for disapproval by the county commission. Should the planning commission find that only parts of the text amendment protect and promote public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare and meet the intent of the referenced documents, comprehensive plan and ordinances, while others do not, then the planning commission may recommend approval of one or more while recommending denial of one or more. And again, the worksheet to be completed is attached to the back of your packet.
Before we get into discussion, does anyone have a disclosure of conflict? Okay. Does anyone have any questions for staff? Would anyone on the subcommittee like to address this issue?
I think this is relatively self-explanatory, but I would like to maybe just make note of something that might be considered maybe just a little bit redundant in terms of how it reads. The, just picking up where it says the applicant, applicant will be required to pay a new permit fee, comma, the applicant will be required to pay a new permit fee. I think we can strike on both after the comma, strike the comma through the applicant will be required to pay a new permit fee for which shall be. And then it would read, the applicant will be required to pay a new permit fee in the same amount as the original permit fee. And that would be consistent with 200.7 and 200.8.
I do not have a problem with that, Larry. Does that need to be in the motion of an amendment?
Yes, and I would assume they will apply to both, both of the proposed amendments.
Would you like to put that in the form of a motion?
Yes, so I will make a motion to amend the text amendment to strike, comma, the applicant will be required to pay a new permit fee which shall be from both 200.7 and 200.8.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to strike said verbiage from both 207 and 200.08. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Is there, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this line item? Okay, hearing none or seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion and continue with the board discussion. From what I'm reading, it looks to be like the attempt is to stop permits from being open-ended for three decades until, until situations change in the area and then folks wanting to come back and do a project that's been tabled for a very long time. So it looks to be like the board has decided, or the subcommittee has suggested a monetary motivation for that, and I understand that. Does anyone else have to make, want to make any more comments or do you want to move on to our worksheet? Well, let's move on to our worksheet. Number one, it says, will the proposed amendment protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, morals, and general welfare? Would anyone like to speak on that behalf?
Yes, I do believe it promotes the public health, safety, and convenience and morals because we, obviously all projects, you know, when they're started, they need to be finished. COVID is a rare case right now, which is a very unique opportunity, but 24 months and 30 months as a builder should be plenty enough time to complete projects. And I think that's what we're looking for. Our neighbors, when they build projects, they want them to be able to finish their homes in a timely manner and their commercial buildings. So I do think it promotes public health and the environment as well.
Okay, so we have a motion for the answer to number one to be yes. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, we'll move on to number two. It says, is the amendment consistent in achieving the objectives of the adopted comprehensive plan, U.S. 35 corridor management plan, and the Taze Valley land use plan? Would anyone like to speak to that?
I believe it does address that as well. One of our goals is to maximize land use in the county. I believe having these open-ended permits, like you said, doesn't accomplish that and to give them some incentive to move forward will meet that objective.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thing is, once again, we have unanimous answers to number one and number two is yes. I will entertain a motion to approve the text amendment for passing on to the county commission. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Make a motion to approve text amendment 202104 as amended.
As amended, thank you. I left that out. Amen. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, same sign. All right, let's move on, Larry.
Okay, this, the next one is text amendment 202105. It's a text amendment to modify Article 1400.07 and also adding two new articles, Article 1400.12A and Article 1400.12B. Again, the authority is found in West Virginia Code 8A78. The proposed text amendment is on page three of your packet, and it begins on a proposed text amendment under Article 1400.07C2B, pole signs. Add, at the bottom there, it says C, also 1400.12A. That's added. Also, adding a new Article 1400.12A, pole signs at intersections. The proposed amendment is to add, pole signs shall be permitted to be a maximum of 100 feet in, excuse me, shall be a maximum of 100 feet in height if a certified professional engineer or certified professional surveyor certifies that the pole sign is located within 2,000 linear feet of the center line of an intersection along I-64 or US 35. The pole sign shall be, shall only be allowed for restaurants, gasoline stations, hotels and motels, and the sign at the top of the pole may not exceed 500 square feet. There's also an amendment to add Article 1400.12B regarding medical cannabis. The proposal is that the, that article read, advertising signs for medical cannabis dispensaries, medical cannabis grow facilities, medical cannabis processing facilities, and medical cannabis laboratories must follow the requirements of the West Virginia Code by including but not limited to the use of the term "medical cannabis" and shall not contain any images, including cartoons depicting marijuana consumption or a marijuana leaf. The signage for medical cannabis dispensaries, medical cannabis grow facilities, medical cannabis processing facilities, and medical cannabis laboratories shall follow the requirements for a retail business in the applicable zone where the medical cannabis dispensary, medical cannabis grow facility, medical cannabis processing facility, or medical cannabis laboratory is located. The facts, the ordinance review subcommittee met and reviewed the current zoning ordinance on May the 12th, 2021, July the 28th, 2021, and August the 24th of 2021. The agendas for the meetings were posted at the Putnam County Courthouse at least three days in advance of each of the hearings. The items that were discussed involved adding provisions to the zoning ordinance relating to permitting pole signs and the signage for medical cannabis dispensaries, medical cannabis grow facilities, medical cannabis processing facilities, and a medical cannabis laboratory. A legal advertisement describing the text amendments proposal was published in the Hurricane Breeze as required on the second day of September 2021. The recommendation of the planning commission shall be presented to the county commission at their next available meeting, at which time a second public hearing will be held. Your options, the planning commission may take a variety of options on the proposed request. Should the planning commission desire further information regarding the facts or hearsay presented during the public hearing, the matter may be postponed for action at a later date. Should the planning commission find that the text amendments protect and promote the health, public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare and meets the intent of the referenced planning documents, the request can be recommended for approval by the planning commission, excuse me, can be recommended for approval by the county commission. Should the planning commission find that the text amendments do not protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare, or does not meet the intent of the referenced planning documents, the request can be recommended for disapproval by the county commission. Should the planning commission find that only parts of the text amendment protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare and meet the intent of the referenced documents, while others do not, then the planning commission may recommend approval of one or more while recommending denial of one or more. And again, the worksheet is found at the end of your packet.
Okay, does anyone have any disclosures of conflict? Okay. Would the, someone from the subcommittee like to speak to the first one?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and speak to this as well. The, there's really two intents here. One, just from a signage perspective as it relates to the new interchange at 35, you know, being near completion and falling in line with our competitors to the west of us and obviously in the, in the canal valley in terms of allowing signages within a certain distance from major intersections. And then as it relates to the medical cannabis, as I'd mentioned on a previous text amendment, the goal is to fall in line with state code and then obviously for the sign, the signage, depending upon the type of retail store, it would fall in line with those.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on behalf of this line item? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing portion of this, of this, of this line item, and I'll open it up for any discussion before we move on to the worksheet. Hearing none, let's move on to facts to be determined. Will the proposed amendment protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, morals, and general welfare? Would anyone like to speak to that?
I believe it does. As I just stated, it puts us, you know, back in line, you know, with, with the development of 35, you know, being near completion. It'll, it'll drive growth into this valley, which will promote welfare in most communities.
Do we have a motion that the answer to number one will be in the affirmative? Yes. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? All right, we'll move on to number two. Is the amendment consistent in achieving the objectives of the adopted comprehensive plan, US 35 corridor management plan, and the Hayes Valley land use plan? Would anyone like to speak to that?
I'll go ahead and speak again. It's, you know, we, we obviously compete with our neighbors, and this, as Mr. Hoyleman said in a previous tax amendment, this will put the most, the best use of, of the land that we have here in the county from a competition, and it will drive growth for the county.
So that's in the form of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion that the answer to number two shall be yes. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? With the answers to number one and two both being unanimously yes, I'll entertain a motion to approve the text amendment for recommendation to the county commission.
I'll make a motion to approve the text amendment to the county commission.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? All right, let's move on to the next one, Larry.
All right, the, the last one is text amendment 2021-06. It's a text amendment to modify Article 600.04, Article 650.02, and Article 1700.17. The authority for the amendments is found in West Virginia Code 8A78. And the proposed text amendments are, begin on page three of your documents. Proposed text amendment for Article 600.04, spatial permit use, modification there. This is to modify what was previously retail sales, pawn shops, and firearms. The modification would be under Q to just state pawn shops and firearm sales as defined in Article 1700.17-Q. Under Article 650.02, permitted principal use, the modification would be to LL, and just simply state again pawn shops and firearm sales as defined in Article 1700.17-Q. The modification to Article 1700.17 would be, Q would now read pawn shops and firearm sales. Number one, the sale of firearms or the loaning of money on the security of personal property pledged in their keeping shall not be permitted use separate from the sale of other retail goods within a C1 or C2 zoning district. Number two, no pawn shop or firearm sales business shall be located closer than 300 feet from a church, school, or residential building. The facts, the ordinance review subcommittee met and reviewed the current zoning ordinance on August 24, 2021. The agendas for the meeting was posted at the Putnam County Courthouse at least three days in advance of the meeting.
Hey Larry, let me interrupt you because I forgot it again. Do we have any disclosures of conflict? Okay. I didn't quite understand what you said, sir. Yeah, he, he needs to leave the room.
Yes.
Glenn, you'll have to...
Yeah, if you've got a conflict, you'll have to leave.
Thank you, Mr. Edgar. I apologize. I keep forgetting to do that. Continue.
All right. One of the items that was discussed at the meeting was involved further clarification of the pawn shops and firearm sales as contained in Articles 600, 650, and 1700. A legal advertisement describing the text amendment proposal was published in the Hurricane Breeze as required on the second day of September 2021. The recommendation of the planning commission shall be presented to the county commission at their next available meeting, at which time a second public hearing will be held. Options, the county, the planning commission may take a variety of actions on the proposed request. Should the planning commission desire further information regarding the facts and hearsay presented during the public hearing, the matter may be postponed for action at a later date. Should the planning commission find that the text amendment protects and promotes the public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare, and meets the intent of the referenced planning documents, the request may be recommended for approval by the county commission. Should the planning commission find that the text amendments do not protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare, or does not meet the intent of the referenced planning documents, the request can be recommended for disapproval by the county commission. Should the planning commission find that only part of the text amendments protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, moral, and general welfare, and meet the intent of the referenced documents while others do not, the planning commission may recommend approval of one or more while recommending denial of one or more. And again, the worksheet is at the back of your packet.
All right. Would someone from the subcommittee like to speak on behalf of this line item?
Uh, yes, I'd like to actually make an amendment to what Larry has presented, and I would like that amendment to be that we strike retail sales from this, retail sales of firearms should be allowed in any other areas of the C1, C2 zoning, and this, let's discuss this on the applicable two forms. There's enough federal regulations for sales of firearms, that's more than sufficient for the sales of firearms, and by keeping this as written, we are severely limiting ourselves and potential businesses coming into county.
So, let me, because you were cutting it out just a little bit, Mr. Asbury, let me see if we're hearing this correctly. So your suggestion is, or proposal is to amend the amendment to strike the word firearms sales from all of the changes that's been proposed. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So any other red text than deleting the word and firearm sales?
And I would like to add, I picked up something else that Jason said. The, the retail sale of firearms are to be governed by federal and state law, and the county ordinance will be no more restrictive than the requirements of federal and state law. That would need to be within the definition of retail sale of firearms.
So you're saying that it's already governed by other laws, we don't need to add anything in the ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes, so the, the goal and objective is for the county ordinances to be no more restrictive than what the federal and state requirements are.
Understood. So, Mr. Asbury, was, you made the motion, is that correct?
I did, correct.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion to make the amendment to the amendment as presented, and we have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay. Do you have anything else that you would like to add, Mr. Asbury? Okay. Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak on behalf of this line item? Please step to the microphone and state your, your name and address.
My name is David Lowe. I'm a resident at 1055 Marina Drive. And that's in the hurricane address. I couldn't quite hear what the gentleman, Mr. Asbury, was saying. And I'm not clear yet as to what your motion was for or against, and what you were deleting from the text language that you're considering for amendment. Can you clarify that, please?
The, the motion that was just passed was to amend the proposed text change to strike the word firearm sales from the proposed changes.
And why is that being struck?
The, go ahead, I'll let you...
Yeah, I'll go ahead and speak to that, and that falls in line with what I just stated, that the goal from the ordinance committee, following our initial meeting, we had some additional back and forth, and it really pertained to federal and state law. And our goal was to have the ordinance fall in line or not be more restrictive than what is currently required or allowed by federal and state.
Is it not the, this commission's responsibility and your desire to protect the community, to provide for the general welfare of the community?
Well, just to answer that, sir, we, we've not approved the text amendment at this point.
I understand that, but I'm just asking this question. Is that not the intent of this commission? To protect the community and the residents of the community from harmful ordinances that can have a negative impact on the community? Is that not your desire? Then I, I don't understand why you want to strike firearms or the sale of firearms from this particular ordinance, because...
The head in, Mr. Pack, Putnam County, by the graciousness of the commissioner, is a second amendment sanctuary city. It's this committee's will that we don't have a court, under Putnam County being a second amendment sanctuary city, or county, excuse me.
Did you understand what Mr. Asbury...
No, I couldn't understand.
Mr. Asbury pointed out that Putnam County has been determined by, by movement of the county commission to be a second amendment sanctuary county. And what the planning commission does is we make recommendations to the Putnam, to the county commission. And that's what the subcommittee was trying to not only fall in line with state and federal guidelines, but in the will of the county commission and the, and the declarations that have already been stated in the county.
Well, you know, I have gone to quite considerable research of this particular ordinance, because my neighborhood is, quite frankly, affected directly by the decisions that you make this evening regarding the text language. There's currently, as everybody here knows, there is currently an issue before the county commission for a writ of certiorari that has been issued upon this board, the county commission, the planning and infrastructure office, and the BZA, that involves a gun shop that's located directly across the street from where I live, within 75 feet of my residence, of my boundary. It's also within 30 feet of a daycare school that has been in business for 15 years, maybe a little bit longer, I'm not sure. So I'm here this evening because I attended the last review board that was set to discuss these particular changes. I was the only person that was present to represent the public at that time. Now, during that commission meeting, which was to review and make recommendations to this commission, was to alter and amend the text language. Now, they spent probably close to an hour discussing that, maybe a little bit longer. And what they decided was that they were going to recommend to this commission that the change in the text would be the removal of the slash marks that separated the words retail sales, firearms, and pawn shops. And, and the change in that amendment that they were going to recommend, which they passed, which I'm assuming they forwarded to this commission, was that that change would include, actually, they would, they were going to eliminate the word retail sales, replace that with guns and firearm sales, I believe it was, comma, pawn shops, comma, and there was one other word, but it slips me right now. The changes were the replacement of the slash marks with commas. It did not recommend that they do away with the word firearm sales or gun sales, which, from what I'm understanding, this commission wants to eliminate that word.
Like I said before, sir...
And that will have a very direct impact, not only on the case that's before your commission...
Sir, sir, we have not yet, we have not yet voted on this text amendment.
I understand. I'm just expressing my opinion.
Okay, well, we've got just a couple of normands left.
Because it's important that, I feel, as a member of this community, I'm not just representing myself. I'm representing every person that's sitting here and every person that is not here, that's a member of the Putnam County community. Because that 300-foot rule for gun sales directly affects every resident that lives in Putnam County, because if you pass this, and, and gun sales are allowed to be sold by eliminating that word, that would allow gun sales to be able to be sold within a 300-foot radius, which is currently prohibited by that ordinance 1700.17.
Okay.
So I'm just asking that you keep this in consideration when you make your final decision.
All right, well, thank you for your time. Did you have something you wanted to add, Mr. Asbury?
Yeah, it is, it is worth pointing out that the county has already allowed two at-home sales of firearms. So therefore, we've introduced it into what would be classified a residential section. 300 foot, in my opinion, is an arbitrary number that has no bearing on safety as far as it's concerned. 300 foot's a made-up number, and most gun stores are some of the safest, you're right, I'm due to, again, the amount of state and federal regulations that govern them.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Asbury. Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Lowe, as well. Is there another member? It's time to move on now, sir.
I'm sorry, but this is really quite important, please.
Sir, we're finished now. Can you please come? Thank you. We still are, yeah.
We need to give everybody...
Correct, correct. We need to make sure everyone has equal time. Can you please state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name's Zachary Campbell, 17 Market Street, Hurricane.
I'm sorry, I missed your name.
Zachary Campbell.
Zachary Gamble?
Campbell.
Campbell, thank you, Mr. Campbell.
At 17 Market Street, Hurricane.
Okay, what can we do for you, Mr. Campbell?
Excuse me? I couldn't hear you.
Go ahead.
I'm here with the West Virginia Citizens Defense League, and I support the amendment to the amendment. That this particular statute, as it stands right now, or this, this regulation, is unnecessary, and it's kind of irregular. There are already firearm stores in Putnam County, and yes, if it's passed, you can sell guns. That's not necessarily going to increase crime. The thing is, firearms are used in multiple occasions. I believe some studies have shown as many as 3 million times per year in defensive situations as well. When it comes to a federal firearms licensee and the federal law, actually, if I can pull it up here, generally, it's unlawful for any individual to knowingly possess a firearm within a school zone. This provision does not apply to the possession of a firearm on private property nor school grounds such as an FFL's business premise, which would be their commercial storefront, residence, or driveway. And the ATF realizes that not all persons who exit an FFL's premises are going to fall under that same described situation, and therefore, the advice states, when someone's leaving a firearm, or leaving with a firearm from an FFL, that it be unloaded and placed in a locked container. I don't see how... I don't see how that is going to affect anything. Actually, having more businesses in Putnam County is a good thing. We're trying to increase the number of businesses, especially during this pandemic, when you've had so many small businesses fail. The West Virginia Citizens Defense League is proud with the fact that Putnam County has declared itself a second amendment sanctuary. And as far as I'm concerned, passing this regulation as it is now, with this amendment to the amendment, striking out the firearms, is going to go a long way to proving to voters that Putnam County's commitment to preserve and restore the rights of its citizens is in line with what it's actually said.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Campbell. Is there, please, sir?
I would like to speak again, please.
No, sir, thank you. Please state your name and address.
My name is Justin Weisong. My address is 48 Rosebud Lane, Hurricane, West Virginia.
What can we do for you?
I myself am a proud second amendment supporter. I'm actually pleasantly pleased with what I heard of responses, of removing the firearms language, you know, from this amendment. To me, having another business in the community that does, that operates with integrity and with the operation of legal firearm sales, I mean, that, to me, is a boost to safety. The store in question, I'm not sure where the footage that the other gentleman had rattled off, but it just doesn't seem legitimate to me. But I, for one, just wanted to make it known that, as far as I'm concerned, I think this is a good thing to remove the firearms language, and we should be and represent ourselves as a second amendment sanctuary, you know, as it was stated previously.
Thank you for your time. Is there someone else that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, you can come. Please state your name.
I'm Laura Slow, and I live at 1055 Marina Drive.
If you might get the microphone a little bit. Thank you.
And I'm not opposed to gun sales, I'm just opposed to them in a residential area. Do you think that somebody's going to want to buy my house that it has children or is an older adult that's within 75 feet of where guns, ammunition are being sold? I don't think so. There was a reason the zoning ordinance was put into place, that it was 300 feet, and I think it should be upheld. I think that's reasonable.
Thank you for your comments, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I'm Wayne Ferguson with, at 4301 First Avenue, Nitro. I'm the president and CEO of Nitro Construction, and is representing businesses here. I think what you've done here with this amendment to the amendment is good, because when you're skewing retail sales with pawn shops, which the basic premise of a pawn shop is loan money for goods versus retail sales, and this being a second amendment sanctuary county is falls right in line with, it's not the guns. It's, you know, all about putting things into place. Pawn shops, I understand. Retail gun sales is just anything, you know, just like selling cars, selling anything else. So I'm proud of what you've done here. And as a business owner, I like keeping things separate, because if you're sitting here looking at something in this, and you lump this business with this business, then it actually skews the two businesses into one and are totally different animals. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, well, we'll close the...
Yes, sir.
No, sir, I appreciate it, you've had your time.
Are you not interested here, but what I have to say is in support for the community that you...
Please state your name and address.
My name is Glenn Jaeger, Sr., 121 Laurel Ridge, Scott Depot, West Virginia.
Okay.
Couple of items I want to mention, because several people have already covered a lot of it. I wanted to address two things that Mr. and Mrs. Low had said. One about the daycare center. The lady that owns the daycare center called us several weeks ago, and a man was beating down their front door over $200. Our employees went over there and held the guy until the police came 12 minutes later. She is grateful, she feels safe. As far as property values go, I don't know how many people of you all are familiar with the property, but it was an eyesore, absolute eyesore for years. It was only partially completed, it was just a basement with trusses laying all over it. We built the building, finished it out, and if anything, it increased the value of the property owners because of the aesthetic looks that it is. As far as safety goes, it has every modern convenience and safety, steel doors, steel windows, steel everything, and it closes down at night for safety. So we are perceived by most people in the area as a plus, not a minus. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jaeger.
I do have one comment with what you said.
Ma'am, we've already...
The windows are on the front, but they are not on the back windows. The back windows are not secure.
Is there any other members? Sir, can you please stop, or I'm going to have to ask you to leave, okay?
But I am part of the community, and I think that...
I understand, we're trying to keep order in the business, so please.
I understand.
All right, is there any other members of the public that would like to speak?
But I insist that be heard, sir.
At this point, I'm now going to close the public hearing portion of this meeting.
I would say one comment. Please remember that the ordinance now prohibits the sale of guns. Removal of the word firearms will make it leave the sale within that 300-foot area.
Okay, so now we're going to move on. All right, so with that being said, we've now closed the public hearing portion. Please refrain from making any more outbursts. With that being said as well, sir, I'm going to have to ask you to leave.
This is the fastest way to do this.
Now, for all those that are here, we do want you to be aware that if the board does move forward and decides to approve this recommendation of this text amendment for the county commission, there will be a second public hearing that will be held, and that will be in front of the county commission. And if anyone would like to take any more time to address any more of their opinions, they can do that at that point. Okay. So now that we've closed that, is there any discussion amongst the planning commission?
I have, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
It's to my understanding that people with a federal firearms permit can actually sell homes or sell guns out of their home if they have a home business?
At this point, that is permitted, correct?
So basically, if any neighbor in any subdivision, I've seen that, is licensed and approved and checked out, and they have their legal ability from the FBI or whoever they check, they can actually retail firearms to individuals. And they would have the obligation to do the same kind of checks that any store, any Cabela's, or anyone else would have to check, because I have bought guns that way, and they checked me very thoroughly. Actually, I bought a muzzleloader, a single-shot black powder rifle, two weeks ago through Cabela's, and it took me three hours to get through that check station process and approve to buy a single-shot black powder. So I am convinced personally that there are regulations and process to go through for someone to buy firearms. Everyone has their own opinion, but I can tell you that I do believe that there are residences in subdivisions where people are approved and have paid the fees and have been checked out, that they can already be selling firearms to individuals now.
That is correct. Any other comments from the planning commission? Okay. Well, let's move on to the facts that need to be determined, then. It says, "Will the proposed amendment protect and promote the public health, safety, convenience, morals, and general welfare?" Would anyone like to speak on that behalf?
I'll take it, Mr. President. I would say yes. Due to the amount of state and federal regulations that are already in place that govern this action, there would be no additional safety concerns to the public. So with that said, I make a motion to approve.
Okay, so Mr. Asbury makes a motion that the answer to number one would be yes, is that correct, Mr. Asbury?
Correct.
Okay, do we have a second of that motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, let's move on to number two. It says, "The amendment consistent in achieving the objectives of the adopted comprehensive plan, U.S. 35 corridor management plan, and the Taze Valley land use plan." Would anyone like to speak to that? You want to take that one again, Mr. Asbury?
I'll give it a shot. I would say yes on that one as well. Again, this is without doing this, we are potentially limiting business and growth, which I think is in conflict of Taze Valley land use form. I would say yes, make a motion to approve.
Okay, so we now have a motion that the answer to number two will be yes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay. With number one and number two unanimously being addressed and voted on in the affirmative is yes, I will entertain a motion to approve the amended text amendment for recommendation to the county commission. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Make a motion to approve text amendment 21, 202106, as amended.
As amended. All right, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Staff report.
I want to make sure you have the commit sheet. Including your package in the commit sheet, to show that the activity, the planning commission has been involved in, um... From April through September. And you will find that most of them, most of the permits that have come in, there are very few of them that are pending or that are waiting on anything. Most of them have been dealt with, approved, and back out the door. So, like I say, there are very few of them that have not been dealt with, and most of them that are on, that have not been dealt with are either pending additional information from somebody, or there've been a request to have it on hold. So again, I think we're staying on top of things as best we can to try to get everything in and out as quickly as possible.
Does anybody have any questions about the staff report to staff? Mr. Asbury, are you still on here?
He had a drop off, he said his phone was about to die.
Okay. I know, Larry, there was a, under unfinished business, actually, that's unfinished business, so I'll wait for that. Is there any unfinished business?
Well, I do have one update. I think we have a new planning director that's coming in.
It's about time, right?
He is, the last I heard, he was coming in on October the first or the fourth of October, not sure which date, but that's the projected date. So we should have a new planning director. According to the county manager, they're going to let me work with him for about a month or so...
Good idea.
To try to help ease him into the job. I can tell you, up to this point, he has been very active in looking over the ordinances. He actually either called or emailed me about a week or two weeks ago, wanted to look over everything. I directed him to our website, and although it may not be completely up to date, at least it will give him an idea of what he's dealing with, or maybe dealing with, when he comes on the job. Since then, within the last day or two, he's asked for the U.S. 35 corridor plan, the Taze Valley plan, all of the plans that we deal with. We forwarded those to him as well, so I know he's reviewing them as well. And this is all in anticipation of him coming in, he's not even here on the job yet, but he's already looking at the documents that we are dealing with on a daily basis, and that he will be dealing with on a daily basis. And by the way, his name is David Coll, C-O-L-L.
Okay.
So that's an update on that.
Well, that's fantastic. Larry, I think I speak for everybody when we say you've done a fantastic job in the interim. Do we not agree with that?
Well, I appreciate that. It's been a learning experience. I can tell you, this is not a job that you come into and you're going to pick it up very quickly. It's something that's going to, that you will probably, 10 years into it, still be learning something. But it's been interesting, and I've enjoyed it. So, like I say, I'll still be around for a while.
I hope so, Larry.
I'd just like to say that Larry is a team player. He stepped up when we needed him to, and on behalf of the county and myself, I just want to tell you thank you.
Amen.
Appreciate that.
Did you have something you want to say, Mr. Low? Okay. There's a couple of items that I wanted to discuss on our new business. One is that, it's come to my attention that we need a special meeting that we'll be having on October 21st. Want to speak to that, Larry?
26th.
26th, I'm sorry.
Yes. There's an item that's come up, and as a result of it, and the timing of being able to publish it, the next meeting, I believe, is on October the 19th. We already have some, we've already put out some advertisements and things on that, so we need to have the meeting on the 19th. The other item that's come up, if we publish it at least by the 30th of September, the earliest we could have it would be the 26th, or at least by the 26th. It wouldn't be ready by the 19th, but if we do it on the, if we hold a special meeting on the 26th, we'll be able to address that item.
Okay, so...
You want to give them just a little bit of background on it, why it's time-sensitive due to the sale of property and...
We have a gentleman that is involved in the sale of a piece of at least two buildings in his development. The longer it goes, the less likely that is going to happen, probably, or it's going to cause him either financial issues or potentially legal issues. So we're trying to accommodate him, get this stuff in as quickly as we can. We believe that we've got everything that the planning office requires at this point. The general rule is, we do not publish things until we have all the documents in. The danger of doing it, if you don't have anything in, is it never gets here, or it gets here after the meeting has been scheduled and you have to continue everything. So we try not to publish those things until we get the entire packet. We now have that packet, we can do the publication. So if the planning commission is agreeable to a meeting on the 26th, we believe we can have it ready for you by then.
And so I'm going to go ahead and call that special meeting, and I greatly would appreciate it. I know it's two meetings, two weeks back-to-back, but that's going to be the only item on that agenda at this point, correct?
That's correct.
If you could do that, would greatly appreciate it. We would need a quorum for that meeting, so go ahead, Marty.
We just have a meeting on the 26th and 19th.
No, it would be both. We'd have to have the, because of advertising, the things are already advertised for the 19th agenda. And Larry, to make it easier, we could, could we possibly set up a conference call, if need be, like we did with Mr. Asbury and Thor today, where if others couldn't make it here, they could call into that meeting?
It's a little bit difficult now. I don't have WebEx anymore since we're doing the live streaming. So I canceled our subscriptions to WebEx.
Mr. Asbury could set that call up for us, though, correct?
He set this one up as a Zoom meeting, and that's the reason we were able to bring him into the day's meeting.
I'm sure he wouldn't be opposed to setting that up for us.
If he or anybody else has access to the Zoom, they give you access numbers and call numbers, and I think there can be numerous people on the call. So if someone has that capabilities, we can...
I do, I'm happy to set that up if you need to.
I appreciate that, Marty. I just wanted to throw that out there, because I know it's a large sacrifice. None of us are paid, all of us are donating our time, and I want to make it as easy on you as possible, but we do want to try to expedite.
And Larry, if I'm not mistaken, this will be relatively straightforward, so it should be a relatively short meeting?
It should be a relatively short meeting, yes. I don't think there'll be, the entire property is one owner, planning to, it's basically, he had a map that listed like five or six... it's basically, he had a map that listed like five or six properties that had been subdivided effectively. And he's, um, later on, they had a map that merged all those back together and he just wants to put the, basically, the original map back on file.
Gotcha.
So it's, it's, it shouldn't be anything controversial. It-
So basically, what Larry's saying, if you could take your half hour, your time to call in, the county greatly appreciate it for everything.
Yes.
Larry, don't walk away yet. There is another issue that I don't know how much we can get into it today, but I, I, I wish Mr. Asbury wouldn't have hung up because he, he and I were discussing this earlier, uh, in the week. Uh, it's brought to my attention that there is an issue regarding, uh, another property that's for sale that, uh, there may or may not be a requirement to put a blacktop road in and only to tear it back out after it's sold. Can you give us an update on that or give us our options of what we can do as board?
Well, my understanding is we've been in touch with the, the owner of the property. My understanding is they were going to, uh, ask for a variance in front of this, but I don't know whether we, have we received the paperwork?
We've received the paperwork for that variance?
Yes.
Okay. Is that something that you guys are going to be able to approve in-house or is it something that we have to do here? That's something we have to do from this board's level, correct?
Yes.
Has it been advertised to be on either of those meetings in October? It is. Is it going to be on the agenda for the 19th or 26th? 19th? I agree. This has been a marathon meeting. So what you're telling me is that we can, we're going to be addressing this on the 19th meeting?
Yes.
If it's not on the 19th, we could do it on the 26th, then?
Yes.
Okay, that, that satisfies my question.
Basically, all it is is a cul-de-sac, whether they pave it or whether they just wait and they pave because the rest of the property is going to be sold, right?
Yes, uh, there's a, the turnaround there.
Right.
And it, on the original plans, it was to be either asphalt or concrete. And now they wanted to sell the back part of the property, but it is, it's gravel. It's, so it's not, it's not what the original plans called for. That's not something that the planning office can deal with.
Correct.
It requires a variance, uh, and it's, you know, quite frankly, it may be a very simple matter for you.
Okay.
Because the, the thought is that if they have to either pave it or, or concrete it, if the property is sold, it's developed on back, whoever buys it is going to immediately tear it up. Tear it back up.
Yeah, that, kind of a no-brainer. All right, well, I appreciate, uh, your update on that. And, uh, we'll look forward to addressing that at a later meeting. Uh, does anyone else have anything to discuss? If not, we can get out of this long meeting. Amen. I'll entertain a motion for a German.
So moved.
So moved. We are a German.
I don't think so. We could have if I let them shut that down at the beginning.
You know, I hate-
I have a client on the 19th and a special date for her.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Trust me, I'm, I'm good with it too.
I'm going to hear 7:00 this morning, so.
I get it. Thank you for your time. He can just talk. Hey, Larry, who should speak up next, please? I can't talk anymore. Someone else.